It's close enough. I'd like to open the Howard's Board of Selectments meeting for May 28, 2019. And I'll read the statement as required by open meeting law. You are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. I see no one raising their hands, so you're missing a great opportunity, but we'll move ahead. We'll move to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, Susan LeBlanc, United States of America, and Israel Compendium for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is always a great privilege for us. This is one of the elected officials in our town clerk. Well, I'll hand it over to you when you take this ceremony and important procedure.
Could I have all the elected officials come to the front, please?
Newly.
Newly elected officials.
Newly elected as well. Thank you very much for correcting. You can go all around the table. Come on up around there, that's fine.
Sorry?
Okay.
Where you should be.
All right. We're all good. Okay, so this is very easy. Okay. Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
And state the position you've been elected to here in the town.
For the town of Harwich.
For the town of Harwich.
According to the rules and regulations.
According to the rules and regulations.
The bylaws of the town of Harwich.
Bylaws of the town of Harwich.
The charter of the town of Harwich.
Charter of the town of Harwich.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States of help me God.
And the Constitution of the United States of help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Stephen.
It was a rough, tough race.
It was so hard, but I just thought, where do you vote?
Now you're blown by me. I see how this works.
We obviously. Let me ask you to take the conversation out. We obviously applaud all those who were elected. We applaud those that ran as well. It's always, it takes some courage to stick your neck out and do, go through this process. So congratulations to everyone. Next is a weekly briefing. Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Chair, I look for my deceased father. I rise to thank the men and women of the DPW. If you haven't been to a cemetery, a ball field, a park, a memorial square, you probably don't know. Last week is crunch week for us. We shut down practically all activities in town except for cleaning the beaches and preparing that. Everybody's on mowers, misery stick, DBA weed whacker for a long week. And they, I think they all did a remarkable job. They worked as a team, and I think they made the town look good, and I thank them for that.
And you're responsible for the weather this weekend as well? Public comments and announcements? Steve?
Thank you, Steve Scannell, Howard's Port. Submitted a letter, which you have, about possibly calling a special town meeting and taking at least a couple of parcels down there in Howard's Port. Now, first of all, I know we have a planning subcommittee. I wasn't able to be there this morning, so I apologize for that. So I just wanted to introduce to the public that the fact is Howard's Port is growing as, you know, I read in the, on the internet today, and that's why you have the subcommittee for parking, et cetera, et cetera. So that's good news. And I'd like to see us move forward with five different strategies. One would be the Rolls Royce, the Cadillac, the Chevy, the VW, and then the cheapie would be the Ugo, you know? Usually in the old days, they used to say, well, show us three plans, the VW, the Chevy, and the Cadillac. But since I've been working on a major project for a bridge for the canal, I think we should be going down the road with the Rolls Royce. And that means matching funds for, let's say, hip surgery, for the planning departments of all the towns on the Cape and Islands. Because when we do these bridges over, and possibly when we restructure the canal zone as a tall ships area with a lot of international tourism aspects, well, then we're going to have a lot of people on our hands to deal with. And so we want to do that with a little bit higher budget than what we have now, I think. But unless we don't want to do anything at all, we can always do the Ugo and maybe rent some space for parking. Okay? So I think there's a broad range that I could argue for and against doing, but obviously, as we all know, we should be doing something for Howard's Port. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I think you, when you first started, you mentioned a planning committee. That'd be a good place to bring that back. I would encourage you also to, we're about to redo our comprehensive plan, which would be an ideal subject, committee to discuss the overall, where we want, where we see Howard's going. So I'd encourage you to participate in that as well. Anyone else for a public comment? Mary?
Probably don't need a microphone, but I'm unsure. Is this the only part of the meeting that's open to public comment?
Anything on our agenda is open to a public comment.
Open to discussion. So if I want to talk about the snack shack, it won't be, it won't be voted before I talk.
It's better to do that when that comes up as the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move then to consent agenda. Ed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, present the consent agenda and move approval of the item there on, is a vote to approve the Caleb Chase Fund request in the amount of $207.07.
Second.
Sir, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? We'll move then to public hearings and presentations. The first item on the agenda is town auditors, powers, and Sullivan discuss a review of the following department, DPW, Harbor, and Recreation.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
Renee Davis, I was the partner in charge of your audit, your independent audit of your financial statements. And I want to talk a little bit tonight about sort of the audit process and the results of the audit, and then some of the departments that we went out to visit over the past two audit cycles and the results of those visits. Do want to remind you that the audit of your financial statements, the primary focus for us as the auditors, is to give an opinion on your financial statements. We, we perform our audits to be able to make sure that you have proper internal controls so that the town can report accurate and timely financial information that goes into your, your audit reports and your, what we call the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And management is responsible for having a system of controls to gather all of the information together in your financial systems so that we can take that information, test it, verify the information, sometimes without outside parties, and to be able to give an opinion on it. We, for the past, this is actually, we're in 19 now, for the past two years that we've been here, we've given unmodified opinions on your financial statements or unqualified opinions. That means there was nothing that we found within materiality that would lead us to give anything other than a clean or clear opinion on your financial statements. With that, the town, for the first time in 2017, submitted a comprehensive annual financial report to the Government Finance Officers Association for an award for excellence in financial reporting. You did get that reward, award. We submitted the 2018 CAFER as well, and we're waiting for the results of that. We expect the same results for that, for that report. And now we're in the middle of starting the fiscal year 2019 audit. So we've been on site. We did our, what we call our preliminary audit work, where we come in and we test your transactions that have gone on throughout the year. So we do that sort of before year end. We test your procurement policies and practices, your revenues, your expenditures, payroll documentation, journal entries, or any miscellaneous adjustments that you make, any of your census data that's used for some of your bigger liabilities, such as health insurance for retirees, and all of that. So all of that's been done. We have not found anything that we consider to be material as far as exceptions related to that. If we find anything small and de minimis while we're doing that work, we tell management about it. But really, it's pretty clean. You have a pretty good set of controls related to that. And as we're going through, the primary focus that we always have is looking at the general ledger, looking at real estate taxes, looking at the collector's office, the treasurer's office, of course, the accounting office, to make sure they have a good process to gather the information and put it together, that they understand that. Above and beyond that, we will go out to different departments. Usually every year, they'll pick one or two departments to focus at a more detailed level. Now, not always based on risk. If there were some change of management or a particular risk, maybe there's a certain department that you want us to look at. In some years, it's just picking someone that we haven't looked at for a while, right? So the first year, and we looked a lot at the cemetery funds and the trust funds. Last year, we, we actually went out and looked at the DPW, the Public Works Office. And Public Works Offices, although they're not collecting a large amount of money for the town, so it's not like real estate, it's not like motor vehicle, they do have other sort of inherent risks in what they do. One thing we always like to focus on with Public Works is how they control other town assets, how they control inventory. Do they have a good inventory control process that allows people to do their work efficiently and effectively, right? So we're not counting every widget, but they are controlling the town's assets to make sure there's not a process for personal use or loss or theft of the town's assets. We did surprisingly found that they do have a really good system over there. They are securing, they're securing the large assets. They do have an asset inventory management program for larger, more expensive assets, assets that are more susceptible to personal use. And for smaller assets, they're really restricting you, so restricting asset, access to them, requiring identification to take assets and so forth when you're doing your job on a regular basis. So we went through, walked through their, walked through their processes with them. We had a couple of recommendations that we would, while we were there, talked to them about them. They were very willing, willing to implement change, and I don't think there's anything that we recommended that they didn't say, we'll do that starting right now. So it was, it was really a good experience. So there was nothing in the management letter written related to that, because really there was nothing that we found, although we do look for that, that really needed to be addressed. Also, we look at, you know, some of the, how they handle the snow plowing operations, right? It's another kind of big thing that they have to do. They hire some independent people to be able to make sure the streets are plowed, you know, safety related, we want to make sure that that happens. Also, you want to protect the town and make sure that that's happening. We went through their, their system for accounting for sick and vacation time. That's another area of risk in most town departments that people could, could not have strong controls to make sure people are in compliance with their contracts, use of town's fuel or the gas tanks, and cash collection. So of course, you have a transfer station out there, that you have trucks going in and out and weighing in and out. So we went through their system to make sure that they're properly accounting for the funds collected there and that the funds are being turned over to the town and actually recorded in the town's ledgers. Again, it was, it was a pretty clean site visit as far as that goes, and just wanted to make sure you were aware, if you didn't know if you had any questions on the work that we did over there. Good with that. So we looked at them last year. Over the past couple of weeks, we came out again and, you know, we talked to the town accountant to see if there's any place in particular we should look, and we look at new operations, things that, that may have changed. And of course, you have, let's see if I can say it, Sakatake Harbor.
Right, you got it.
A pretty impressive new, new facility over there with, you know, some new systems and some new revenues that are going to be collected. So we did go over there to, to meet with the harbor master and his staff to see what their process is for accounting for all of the different revenues. There's a lot of different revenue sources. Moorings can be a little bit tricky because they're not, you know, they're scattered in different places that it's sometimes hard to keep track of. Then you have slips transient boaters coming in and out. There's some waterway user fees that you assess here. Boat excise tax actually goes through the collector's office, but they do some accounting for that. Ramp fees, parking tickets, et cetera. So we did look at their system to make sure they have a process to make sure they're charging the right amounts, the approved amounts to different boat owners, that they have a process to go out and audit, that they are going out to check the boats' lengths to make sure that the right fees are being assessed based on what boats are in what mooring spots, and that they have a good collection process, because you do have a waitlist. So if you're not collecting from boat owners, you could get your revenue other ways because of the waitlist process. And again, they, they were pretty impressive as far as being able to account for and show us exactly what revenues were collected, from whom, at each location, really, you know, based on what they had. They had a really detailed, I'm going to say spreadsheet, of all the different mooring locations, and they do go out and actually check them to make sure they're measuring the boats, and they were able to show us that process as well. One of the new things coming up recently is we find a lot of places are doing more credit card collections and online collections. So we went through that process with them. That can be, you know, it's not our usual collecting cash and checks and turning it over, but to make sure they have a process to verify that that money actually came into the town, that they're recording it on their end, and they're reconciling to the ledger, and they actually do that. The other department that we went out to look at this year, and I actually went out just recently, last week, was the Recreation Department. And coming into beach season, one of the main things that they do, they have a lot of programs going on, but one of the things that they do that can be really difficult to manage is the, is collecting cash at the beaches, right? So you have, usually it's different people that are hired seasonally, going out and collecting, and a lot of times it's really, it's tough to not handle cash at beaches. I don't know any of the beaches around that don't handle cash. So we walked through their policies and their procedures for making sure that they are giving out tickets as they're collecting money and actually reconciling that, those ticket numbers to the money that gets turned back into the community center every day and is actually turned over to the town treasurer and deposited and reconciled to the ledgers of the town at night. So we walked through that process. They also, there's a lot of programs over there. So they have several different programs that they run through the recreation center, and we looked at their process for collecting money from individuals as they're going through those processes and making sure that the rosters that they're using every day for those programs tie back into the money that was deposited with the town. And again, it was pretty, it's a very nice facility. I haven't been disappointed in any of the places that we've, that we've gone to here in Harwich. Very impressive, and they knew what they were doing. They are aware of the internal control process and how that should work, and they do reconcile their records on a regular basis to what's reported in the town's ledgers. That feeds up into the town's financial statements. So back to, back to sort of what our concern is with it. We, again, we like to, you know, those aren't the biggest money collectors, but those are areas that maybe you're collecting more cash, or it's hard to manage the money. And we make some recommendations. As we're there, we certainly verbally communicate some recommendations. All of the departments that we've met with have been very open to that, to that communication and are willing to implement change whenever we have recommended it to them. So other than that, I just, the other thing I just want to touch on briefly is last year, the 2018 audit, when we finished up, we had, going in, I think prior year management comments, there were 10 of them. And management worked very hard. Nine of them, this, at the end of 2018, were considered resolved. So they had taken our advice, I'm going to say our advice, or the advice that's been on the management letter for a couple of years. They have implemented those changes. We were able to see those changes, and I think there's one that was considered partially resolved because the town is still working on that, that process. And there was one new comment for 2018, and I know they've been doing some back. It was related to old outstanding checks or checks that went into tailings, and they didn't have support for some of that. And I know they've been sort of digging back in history to try to resolve that one, too. So I do want to report to you that they take our advice and our suggestions very seriously and tore a really good outcome. So now, going into this year, it's going to be a little bit shorter.
Thank you. Yeah, the, I haven't caught my attention at first was the number of items that had been resolved.
A lot of them.
Good. Don, comments, questions?
I was going to make the same comment you did, although I, I will take note that it's extremely impressive. I've never seen a limited liability corporation's signature before, because they're not a person.
No, but there's a signature. It's required.
Ed?
Very pleased.
Steve?
Great.
Thank you, Ed. I do have one question. Over the years, we've had some discussion about the systems we use in different departments. When you look at that, is there a sense that they're linked, like waterways in the town system and golf in the town, that they're, that they're, they're linked to be most efficient, or should we be moving towards one, one accounting system across different departments?
So most of the departments that we're looking at are not integrated with the town's general ledger system.
Right. That's my question.
So there are, there are ways you can do it, although what I find is, when you go to a rec department, they use a recreation department software. If you go to a golf course, they usually use a golf department software. That information ends up flowing into your general ledger, but they are not linked. And I find that to be pretty consistent across the board. If they were all integrated and as they were entering things in at the harbor master's office, they were automatically coming over, that would be more efficient. It's usually not built to happen that way.
Okay.
And you're balancing, you're sort of balancing what you're able to provide for services with financial information.
Yeah, the reason I ask is we're always looking for, obviously, more efficiencies to save money and do all that, but it looks like we're where we are.
What you're doing is pretty consistent with what I see in other places.
Okay. That probably answers. The question I had was, do most of the towns use a number of different systems rather than?
They do. As I mentioned, you know, so usually school lunch uses, a school lunch program, recreation uses a recreation program, the golf course uses something built for golf courses, the harbor master uses something built to keep track of moorings and their permits. There's not one system.
You don't see any movement towards that?
No. The, the number of municipal software systems is very limited right now. What I do see happening is more and more online payment options, so, and, you know, so invoice cloud, a lot of them will use, but different departments will then start using their own. You know, everybody wants to allow people to go pay online, and we like that because it's less cash coming in, but there's not always good, clear policies, because usually every department sets it up themselves. So if you're looking to integrate that, that's probably one way you could do it.
Okay. So that's, that's in the future, possibly.
Yeah.
Anyone in the, in the audience wish to, while we have her here, a question or, and Carol, nice job. You need to take a bow for all the work you do.
She works pretty hard.
And we have a celebrity in our audience, Julie's here, just previous chairs, so you can't, you can't sneak in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing, proposed amendments to the building department fees. And I understand this is correction of some commercial fees, and Ray?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ray Chasely, Building Commissioner.
We have to open the public meeting, I'm sorry.
Hang on one second, Ray.
Talk about fishing or something for a second.
We just got to open the public meeting, Ray.
Oh, okay. The Howard's Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM during their regularly scheduled meeting. The hearing will be held in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street. Howard's for the purpose of reviewing proposed amendments to the building department fees. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to these proposals. Additional information is available at the office of the town administrator, signed the Howard's Board of Selectmen, published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, May 19, 2019.
Thank you, Ed. Ray, you're on.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make a couple points on this, just to make sure everybody understands. We're not trying to raise any fees. What we're, what we're doing is taking the commercial fee, what we call a commercial fee, that was, took effect in February, and the board voted on, and take that fee, which is 75 cents per square foot, and break that down into subcategories, building categories, for instance, roofing, demolition, windows and doors. And in that way, we can make the fee more fair for commercial buildings and commercial contractors. And we do that similarly in the residential code, residential fees. These fees would not apply to one or two family houses. That, that, those fees are staying the same, and everything works fine with that. But these fees would apply to all other types of building in the town, whether it be schools or restaurants or mercantile stores, stop and shop, anything that's of that nature, and multifamily housing. So there was nothing scientific about this. I, it was just my best feel for how to fairly apply the fee, the 75 cents fee.
Ray, could you possibly give us an example of the disparity?
Yes, I could.
Go ahead, Ray.
All right. So let's suppose you had a 10,000-square-foot multifamily housing complex in town that you wanted to re-roof. Right now, we would charge 75 cents per square foot for that. And that would come out, the fee would be $7,500, which is exorbitantly high for something like that. So I'm proposing that we change that fee for roofing, just re-roofing the building, add to seven and a half cents a square foot, so that the fee would end up being $750 instead of $7,500, which is more in line with what it costs us to do the inspections and process the paperwork and that type of thing on a roof that size.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Chris?
Actually, Ray used the example, we did have a person came in, they wanted to re-roof. What he didn't say was the roof was about $35,000, and we were going to charge them $7,500 for the fee, which really didn't seem to make a lot of sense versus it would be a similar fee if he was to build an addition of 10,000 square feet. Then the addition of 10,000 square feet, that makes more sense to have the $7,500. So we do have some real-world examples. I think when we created that difference in the fees, we just didn't put the different specifics ones, the specific ones in there.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions from the audience? If not, close the public meeting, and we'll move to the Board of Selectmen's comments.
Close the public hearing.
Moving close.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Steve, I'll let you go first this time.
On this?
On this.
The only, only question I would have is, how do we compare to the other towns? Is, is this something that's driving us because other towns?
Is, is this something that's driving us because other towns treat it differently, or is it just, you know, we had a light shine on a particular project and said, oh my goodness, it costs too much?
The last time I was here, I was told not to compare us to other towns.
Okay.
But, but in the 75 cent per square foot commercial fee, we compare favorably with other towns. We're in line with other towns. Most towns do not break the fee down to the extent that we're breaking it down here. Most towns have two or three commercial fees. I just thought this was fairer, and it covers a more, a wider range of, of types of buildings. Thanks, okay.
Michael?
Thanks, Ray. Ray, could you just, how did you come up with these numbers then? They look fair to me, but how did you come up with the numbers?
Well, there's wide ranges in the different types of commercial buildings, much more than there are in single and two-family houses. And there's different types of construction. So I just tried to, just for no other reason, in most cases, say that each element of the work, whether it be demolition, roofing, foundation, whatever, it's about 10% of the full 75 cent fee. But I said, if we have to get a certain amount of money just to cover our costs. And so the minimum fee of $150 is just based on processing paperwork and doing an inspection. So I set a minimum level, and then tried to have a, you know, a unit that we could use universally for different buildings.
Thank you, Ray.
Ed?
The 70, the $70 fee gets put on everybody, the application fee?
Yes, that's true, and it's also true with residential permits.
Does that count, does that count as part of the 150 minimum, or not?
No, no, that's the application fee. That's for us to get it started through the process.
All right. Don?
I get a chance to explain to Steve what happened last year. We were solely looking at the comparison to other towns. Under, under state law, you have to be able to sustain your fees on the basis of what they cost you to do these things. And you're not supposed to be able to make a profit off of them. So, actually, Ray and Chris and I sat for about an hour in his office last year and worked over who touched what, and what pay scales they were at. I'm satisfied that what he's done can be supported by the actual cost of the production of the particular area that's being charged.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah, I move we accept the schedule as submitted.
Second.
Second, present a discussion. Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Who seconded that, just a little?
Michael did.
Thank you.
Board regal. Thank you, Ray.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Ed, is another public hearing?
Another public meeting, disposal area fees, Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting. The hearing will be held in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street. Harwich for the purpose of reviewing and the proposed increase to the C and D tip rate, and to add a fee for treasure chest stickers. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to these proposals. Signed, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, on May 9th, 2019.
For a second to open the public meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have before you for your consideration this evening the FY, my FY '20 disposal area fee recommendations. In that recommendation, I am recommending that we increase the C and D disposal rate by $10, the MSW, disposal, commercial MSW disposal rate by $10, institute a treasure chest fee for the treasure chest sticker that we instituted last year. What I am not recommending is an increase in the residential permit. We used to refer to it as the residential sticker fee until we did away with the stickers a couple of years ago, because that appears mostly imbalanced. I make that assertion because I included a spreadsheet that I capture all the costs that I know of to run the disposal, including all direct costs of the tip fees that we pay when we haul materials, transportation, fuel, salary and wages. I also include indirect costs, such as vehicle amortization, overhead and fringe benefits for employees, and say, support staff for disposal area functions, such as vehicle maintenance department spends a fair amount of time on them. All of those costs are captured in that spreadsheet, and then we allocate, then we divide that spreadsheet up into things that your residential permit purchases you, and things that there is a user fee, which I refer to as commercial, anything that's a user fee associated with. That exercise showed that the cost of residential sticker should be $162. It really is close enough for government work, should we say. So we're not, we like to charge in increments. Amy would go out of her mind if we started charging, you know, $162 for a sticker. The recommendation to go up on the C and D is solely based on market conditions. We are busier than ever. I think we're a victim of our own success. The guys do a fantastic job at that. And just year after year, I have underestimated the growth in that. I've tried to just match the town of Yarmouth. Mostly, they're the only other town that handles commercial quantities of that. And every single year for the past, I think since Mr. Clark's been here, I've underestimated how much growth we've had in that function. And we've had to augment the DPW budget to support that. I, I think that raising that fee, in fact, when I was before the board mid-year, I think a year ago, some board members were recommending we should have went up more than the $5 we did, just to match the town of Yarmouth's increase. Town of Yarmouth had not set their rates when I wrote you back in April, and I still have not heard what they were doing. They were going out to bid with something and hadn't got, had not got it back that I know of. And the same thing holds true with the MSW. The commercial MSW has become half of our business. And that mix has changed versus the residential trash we handle and the commercial trash. Again, I think because there's only other place is the town of Yarmouth Transfer Station is run by Cavanta, the railhead, is the only other outlet for commercial haulers to go to. You might have heard the last couple of weeks, Cavanta was shut down, and it created quite a backlog, and we had no choice but to shut. We were only allocated one trailer a day to one landfill, and we had to shut our commercial traffic down. And without the commercial traffic this time of year, we're doing, filling like a trailer a day, which is manageable. Open it up, we filled two and a half today. And it's busy. And I think by going up to $10 on that, that may encourage some people to go to the Yarmouth Transfer Station rather than us out of convenience. I cannot find out what they will, CMAS or Cavanta will not share, what they charge their haulers with us. We've tried. I can talk to a hauler or two that may disclose that information to me. But it's in, it's in the neighborhood. Commercial MSW has increased in volume by, I think, 30%. We were doing 7,500 three years ago, or about nearly 11,000 tons a year now. So, again, we're just, we're, these guys do a great job. They provide a valuable service to residents and businesses alike, and the businesses keeps on coming in. Well, last portion is a treasure chest, institute a treasure chest fee. Last year, the board voted a policy to restrict treasure chest access to Harwich residents only. We needed to provide a way for the treasure chest volunteers to identify that. And we purchased treasure chest stickers. We purchased initially 5,000 of those, since we sell about 5,000 permits, we gave out 6,500 this year. I'm recommending we institute a $10 fee on that for a couple of reasons. One, I think it'll help the treasure chest staff to maintain the board's policy of Harwich only. I think we won't be giving out 6,500 of those, or selling 6,500 of those. I think my estimate would be probably between 4,000 and 5,000 that will be purchased, and to offset the treasure chest costs. Although the treasure chest doesn't cost a lot, probably $10,000 a year, you know, purchasing stickers, selling stickers, there's all costs associated with that. And I think by instituting a $10 charge on that, you help offset those costs. And we did run this by the treasure chest committee, and they fully supported that recommendation.
Thank you. Ed, as usual, we greatly appreciate your detailed analyses. Helps, helps our discussion.
Thank you.
Michael?
I think public hearing.
Oh, public, excuse me. I'll, I'll get it in order here eventually. Any comments from the audience, public?
Move that we close the hearing.
Whoop, here we go.
Sorry. Me and Devery, Norrie's Drive. I hope I don't sound too stupid, but if, as a taxpayer, I'm buying a transfer station sticker for the year, gives me access to recycling. Also, people who buy just a recycle-only sticker is, gives them access to recycling. So, I don't understand how the treasure chest isn't recycling. I think that's one of the main purposes of it, and also gives people who can't afford things to get things. And the second thing I think it does is it keeps a lot of volume of trash out of the transfer station. So that would be my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Link, you have any response to that?
Well, we do provide recycling to the residents of Harwich, anyone that purchases a, a permit to enter the facility. The treasure chest is a separate entity from that, where we encourage, it's basically a swap shop, where people can bring things that they deem is reusable, and somebody may want those things, which is always a greater proportion than what actually gets taken. We, when I cited the cost of about $10,000 a year, we have $3,000 or $4,000 in disposal cost, come in cleaning the swap shop, which we do every single week, during the week while they're not open, stuff that, materials that they haven't been unable to, to give away. It's, we, I was shocked, we ended up giving out 6,500 stickers. And I think to help manage this, instituting a small fee of $10 would be, would be appropriate. And, and I think it would cut down on some of the volume. It would cut down on, out of town, or non-Harwich residents trying to enter the facility.
Thank you, Link. Good comments. We debated this at, at length, I think a year ago, and the issue, number one, was how to manage it. We, with some of the neighboring swap shops that temporarily or more permanently closed, and we were overrun. And so we instituted the sticker system, and we find that now costs money. So we're trying to recoup those, those costs and still manage the area. Ed? Go ahead, I'll, I'll let you, go, go ahead.
Okay. I did a little research on what other towns do. In Orleans, it's included with the transfer station pass. In Brewster, it's free to all. In Chatham, it's a $5 recycle sticker for a non-resident. In Eastham, it's included with the transfer station pass. Unfortunately, Dennis and Yarmouth were closed. And P-Town, you must have a transfer sticker, and it's included with that.
Thank you.
And I just feel like, as a taxpayer, we're really getting nickelled and dimed a lot.
Ed, you have a comment?
Well, I understand that there's an, an expense in, in printing the stickers alone. There's an expense in handing, handing them out, and, and there's an expense in operating the, the facility itself, paying the, paying for the disposal of stuff that winds up getting thrown away because nobody's taking it. But if, if the estimate's $10,000, and we're setting up a fee that is $10, and you're expecting to sell between 4,000 and 5,000, that's $45,000 in, in revenue to cover a $10,000 cost, which seems to be to fly in the face of the...
Emerson College.
Emerson College. I mean, you know, if, if we are going to need to charge to cover our costs, we should be covering our costs, not making 30 grand on, on it.
But we're not, we're only... I mean, it's, it's $10, right? So, is that the proposed fee? So, the overall cost was 10,000 to run it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Link?
Yeah, I'm, if, if there's more comments from the public, we should be doing this in...
Any other comment from the, that's okay, sorry. We have one more than, excuse me.
I'm Peggy Gabor. I, I have a sticker. I hardly use it. But when I do, it's like I'm emptying things out of my house. And my concept is, I bring it over to the treasure chest because somebody else may use it. It's kind of a, I get it out of my place, I give it to your place. I don't think there ought to be a fee for that kind of recycling. I think it's just in the community spirit. But the $10 fee, I think, is really high. I don't think it's fair, because we're already taxed quite a bit, looking at my last tax bill. And I just feel if I'm going to pay 160 for dump sticker, I'm not going to pay another 10 for the treasure chest. I'm just going to take everything over to the dump, or the, whatever we call it, the transfer station. Maybe I'm not modern enough. But that's my, my thinking is, why, why pay the $10? It's kind of a situation where that's going to, I'm just not going to use the treasure chest.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? If not, motion to close the public hearing. Michael?
Close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're closed. Steve, then we'll, I'll turn it back to you.
No, I, I was, I was kind of parroting what, what Ed had to say, and I wanted to hear what Link's response is going to be to the disparity in the cost.
The $10,000 I cited was what our direct cost, utilities, disposal, that sort of thing. Stickers, I think we spent $3,500, something in that neighborhood, purchasing stickers. We purchased 5,000, and then it costs more when you purchase them singularly by the 500 roll. We ended up having 6,500 of them. You know, part of, part of the recommendation was I was dealing with a treasurer, and she likes things in round increments, when I had, had this discussion. So I, I, I mean, you know, whatever you want to do is fine with me.
Michael, comments?
Like, you mentioned that we, we gave away 6,500. That was, I assume, just to Harwich residents, since we made a policy.
Yes, sir.
So how are you going to go from 65 to now an estimate of four to five?
I think once you start charging them, and they're not free, and you have to produce more documentation to secure them, like you do your residential permit, I think the number will go down. My intuition tells me the number will go down significantly.
We debated this, we did debate this a lot, and there was a lot of meetings on this. And we, we decided to go to residence only, met by some controversy. But at the time, that $10,000 estimate was before we went to residence only. And I believe that now that we don't have traffic jams on Queen Anne Road, it's working. So I imagine that estimate of what we're dumping is going away, going down?
I had not tracked that prior to, a year or two ago. So every time the guys take the front end load or dump the small can up there, and they know, they now go across the scale. I could tell you what utilities were. I didn't have a grasp of what the actual disposal is. And the disposal rate isn't what, is just what we're paying as a town.
Right. I remember this conversation, though, and 10,000 was... I remember this conversation though, and 10,000 was an inflated number. So, now to ask to produce 45,000 to offset the costs, we really should be talking about a different operation. So, I'm completely against charging and I think, as one of the previous speakers said, they pay $160 for a dump sticker. We seem to continue to go up and up and up and this is supposed to be to take items out of the mainstream trash and give it to people that maybe can't afford something and it seems to be working great. I'd like to see a real number of what it's costing you and maybe the dump sticker goes up by $2 if we have to go up on the dump sticker. But I don't see charging $10 to a resident to use that.
Thank you, Michael. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of echo everything that was said. My major question is, this would be for going in as well, dropping off as well as taking out, right?
To get into the facility.
Aren't we shooting ourselves in the foot, though? I mean, I'm thinking that the people who would be most likely to avoid getting the sticker would be the ones who are dropping off stuff. And the whole process was designed to find a new home.
I'm probably going to put the Chairman of the Treasure Chest on the spot here. There is not a week that goes by that I don't hear from Mr. Caruso about the challenges, the trials and tribulations of enforcing our Howard's only policy. It is difficult to ask volunteers to do that. We did, we were thinking if we instituted a fee, we could get a part-time person that would be more captive, that might be able to enforce that a little better. I really, if the board would grant Tom to be able to speak, I think he could shed a little light on it.
Before you get to that point, my question would be, why would that be enforced at that place? I mean, if we're giving the stickers out from here and you had to demonstrate that you did live here, we're not putting them on any spot particularly because we've already narrowed down the constellation of potential people because we wouldn't issue the permit otherwise.
Dennis and Yarmouth are closed. Their swap shops no longer exist. We were the most popular swap shop on Cape, bar none. They have difficulty getting enough volunteers to staff it. They're actually too busy, I think, to handle what they've handled, what they're handling. And it is a constant battle to ensure that policy of Howard's only. I mean, we try, we try our very best to make sure only Howard's people get it, but I get told the stickers are making the rounds and getting put on different people's cars. And when he goes and checks the plate number, often people have a, the plate does not match the sticker that was issued. And my thought train was if we charge a small fee for that, some of that would go away.
Michael?
Link, we had a conversation about doing a sticker, a joint sticker, that you drove down and drove the same way you're going into the dump now and make a right and go up the hill into the swap shop, which would then be license plate recognition for Howard's residents. How come we're not looking at that?
Not everyone that goes to the Treasure Chest has a disposal area sticker, buys a permit to do so. I think if that, if we were only allowing people to buy disposal area permit and to enter that, I think that could work, but that's...
But what would be the difference between having another keystroke in your computer saying that it's a, giving them the same sticker, different color, they come in and they can only make a right? How can plate recognition not work for them?
You cannot monitor that stream with the commercial traffic. We're having one person in there, there's no way to really monitor that stream. It's better with the license plate recognition, but to say that that's 100% and we get people and all I think you'd be doing is having the computer tell her, hey, you don't belong, you don't belong, and now you've created a backlog. I mean, you know, we go through, even this time of year, I think they just did 2,000 vehicles on Saturday. It's nuts.
I'll just close my comments with, if we're giving stickers out and we're checking registration, same as we do with beach stickers, dump stickers, if we're checking those stickers and they have to be put on a car with a license plate on it, stuck on the car, I don't know how they'd be making the rounds. And I don't, I don't, I don't understand how we can't enforce that. Prior to license plate recognition, Link, we had the same thing, we had dump stickers. You stuck them on your bumper and you couldn't get in without it.
Well, we stuck them on the windshield and Aaron, honestly, the scale house attendant doesn't have the time. If she saw the proper color, that was it. You were in. With the license plate recognition, the checking is a little better and more accurate than was ever possible, having one person do that job. But I think it would just be creating a lot of problems to funnel all the Treasure Chest past the scale house.
Just so we're clear, I mean, an actual sticker on an actual bumper, red, that is for not going past, not license plate. But if we give it to somebody and it matches their car and they stick it on their car, I don't know how we can't enforce a red sticker on a bumper.
Well, that's the objective and you would think that was straightforward. It isn't.
Okay.
If, with the board's pleasure, could maybe Mr. Caruso make a comment?
Absolutely.
Tom Caruso, Chairperson of the Treasure Chest. It seems like it should be simple, but quite frankly, it's not. The hardest problem that I have coordinating that program is that the volunteers do not want to say no to people that come in and are from other towns. As Link said, people are handing those stickers around. And so, when they come in and I'm on the gate, I will check to make sure that the sticker matches the plate. And when it doesn't, I try to, in a low-key manner, tell them that they can't come in. And that immediately starts a confrontation. Most of the volunteers are not willing to have that conversation and deny that person entry. Because people, most people are great, but there's 2% that just go off on the volunteers. I've had volunteers in tears. I've had volunteers tell me that if I assign them to the gate, that they're going to quit. I don't have enough volunteers now to man the program. And what we really need is to have a person there six hours Saturday, six hours Sunday, who's willing to enforce your policy. Right now, we're not fully enforcing your policy. I'm trying, but I can't be there all day Saturday and all day Sunday. And until you have someone who is willing to do that, be there all day Saturday, all day Sunday, to check and enforce your policy, we're getting a ton of people from out of town. We're taking in much more than we send out. I see the bucket loader come up and take the things out that we can't get rid of and it's a lot. And I know you're charged by weight. That's just the reality of it. It has, it has been very, very, very difficult. If I can take the liberty of a minute or two more, I will tell you that it is not uncommon for volunteers to have the F-bomb dropped on them multiple times. I had one gentleman come in and when his car approached and he didn't have a sticker and I asked him, I said, can I see your permit? He said to me, I don't have a permit, but I have a gun. I tried to make a joke out of it and he did leave, but I got to tell you, if that was another volunteer out there, I think I would have lost that person. Now, to that man's credit, he came back the next week and I recognize him because you, that's something that sticks with you. And he rolled down his window and he said to me, you know, I talked to my wife about what I said to you and I just wanted to apologize. So, to his credit, he came back. But that's the type of treatment that the volunteers get. Called names, various hand gestures are given. It's very difficult for me to keep volunteers and to get volunteers to come in.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
It seems to me, Tom, that the major problem is the enforcement component of this because right now, we weren't aware of the fact that people were still blowing by the gates without a sticker. Why wouldn't we approve the other parts of this schedule and ask you and Lincoln to get together and align this more with the actual cost to provide that extra person, the extra, because right now, you've overshot what you're capable of being able to sustain with expenses. So, I mean, if you did that and came back with something that included a sticker, included some sort of enforcement for the sticker, it won't be $10, probably. Because we could beat this to death tonight, but we're still not going to come to a conclusion about whether it's fair or not until you come up to show us what it would really cost to actually implement this.
Three, Mr. Chair. I have done just that, Mr. Howe. I met with the administrator, the cost to have somebody there for 12 hours a week would be approximately $10,000 for the year. Added to the $10,000 that I say we have in actual hard costs, it's $20,000.
But it's been bandied about here that what you're generating is closer to $40,000.
Yeah, okay. Don, this move to Chris and Michael.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's pretty obvious that we need to look at getting some assistance down there. We did not incorporate that into the 2020 budget. So, I think holding off for this year gives us a chance to go and do the due diligence and put something in and come back with an alternative, perhaps. Probably makes more sense for 2021.
And, Michael?
I agree and I think that now that we're talking about hiring people, this should be a much broader conversation than this proposed fee amendment because this is the first time this board has heard that we wanted to hire somebody for the Treasure Chest. So, we've heard nothing about this.
Link, I appreciate your efforts. I'm afraid I'm on the side of, I'm reluctant to raise it at this point because I'm afraid that will stop the flow that was mentioned. And even the, I agree we need help, but I'm not too sure, even if we have a paid help, if someone is threatening, they're going to threaten regardless whether they pay for a sticker or not. I'd like to come back and just verify it some more. Michael?
I move that we approve the proposed amendments to the disposal area fees minus the swap shop sticker.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Clear.
And Steve?
Just a question, so is there a proposal to come back with something?
Well, that will be, we'll ask Chris to bring back and work with Link to bring back some more. Link?
You wouldn't have time now to hold a public hearing and be in place for the fiscal year. And everything we do is on the fiscal year. So, I would say we get our ducks in a row, provide you more information in the same format or if you'd prefer, before, but sometime next spring, I think, would be the appropriate timeframe.
I don't want to rush into this, there's a lot of things going on. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve, for that. Ed?
The only unfortunate piece of this is apparently we're going to subject our volunteers at the Treasure Chest to another year of abuse, you know? And that's really unfortunate.
Ed, Michael?
So, maybe we bring this back soon rather than later and have a conversation about what our ultimate goal is with the Treasure Chest.
Mike has a point, we could bring it back and see if we can find funds.
We could, you know, we could continue this and obviate the need to actually do the full two weeks.
I believe June 10th, we start selling disposal area permits. It's a week and a half, two weeks away.
I think our decision's made. If we go down this, we'll struggle and Tom will see what we can do to help.
I just wanted to say one thing, that the key to it is having someone there consistently applying your policy. When I'm there, I can do it. There are some other volunteers that are willing to do it also, but a number of them are not willing to confront people. So, that's the key to this and I think 99% of the problems that we have at the Treasure Chest go away if you have a coordinator there all day Saturday and all day Sunday, which is six hours each day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, if we still have the policy about the stickers, we just don't have money in the budget to do to the level we're talking about. So, you know, I'm not, I don't want to say that we want to leave the volunteers to their own. I think what we'll try to do is Lincoln and I can certainly have a discussion, is there some way to have a pilot program maybe for this year, not as expensive, and put something formally in the budget? Just to the point, I mean, until Lincoln came in, I wasn't even aware that this was an issue myself until a few weeks ago, so.
That'd be good, you could do that.
You know, I'd like to say that I think Tom and the Treasure Chest volunteers do yeoman's work. They really do.
We aren't arguing that, by the way, that we understand.
No, I understand. And I just wanted to thank Tom for his efforts. We had a real mess there a couple of years ago with his leadership and the committee's leadership. They adopted some sound policies, some volunteer etiquette. I think it's really cleaned up and been all in a positive direction.
Fully agree. Fully agree. We have a vote, a motion, and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent? This passed. Thank you for your efforts, Thomas Bacy. We'll keep track of this.
Thank you.
The next public hearing, Ed, you want to open this hearing?
Notice, public hearing, Harbor Management Plan. Howard's Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM, during the regularly scheduled meeting. This hearing will be held in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of reviewing amendments to the Harbor Management Plan. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to these proposals. Signed, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, May 19, 2019.
Thank you, Ed. Let me comment that because our discussion tonight regards the Harbor Management Plan and only that, I've asked Matt Hard as the Chair of the Waterways Committee, the Waterways Committee here, too, is open a public hearing as well, so we're sure we have as broad a hearing as possible on this item.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven members here this evening from the Waterways Committee.
Thank you. So, we've, in essence, have two public hearings on at the same time now to have this discussion. Zandy, is John Rindon here or someone? John, you want to lead the discussion and then we'll hold over. Michael?
Given that it's a public hearing and Waterways is also having a public hearing, maybe they can join us up here because I imagine the audience is going to be asking questions.
You're welcome to join us up here, these representatives, please. Matt, you're...
Mr. Chairman, they probably should also announce that they posted at the fire station, but they relocated over to here is my understanding in that you want to convene your board officially.
I did it, not officially, but officially, we're now in session of the meeting.
Okay. Want to come join us?
No.
For those who don't, you can just raise your hands and we'll recognize you're here.
Take a seat.
While they're, while they're taking the seat, let me, let me ask all of you here to remember that we're all Harwich residents, neighbors and friends. And there may, some of these issues we seem to have hot, are hotly debated. I'll ask again that you do it respectfully and friendly and we'll come to a conclusion. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. John Rindon, Harbor Master. I was before you last week at last week's Board of Selectmen on this very issue. So, again, it's kind of a continuation on the discussion of our Regulation 7.17, our Harbor Management Plan that speaks to the sale or use of alcohol at our town landings, piers, docks, buildings in Sacquetucket Harbor. So, I'm here before you to request a change to the Harbor Management Plan now that we have a new facility there at Sacquetucket Harbor that has an approved lease and approved seasonal liquor license that has been issued by the Board of Selectmen and the ABCC. Obviously, the regulation has been in place for many years. I think Mr. Howe asked me last week when it was in place. I don't know specifically. The Harbor Management Plan has been in existence... The Harbor Management Plan has been in existence since early 2000.
2004.
2004 or '05. Thank you. And so, now we have a new operation, and so I think the change is minimal. I have written a memo with the current regulation stated and what the recommended change would be. I highlight that there still will be no sale or use of alcohol in any town landing, float, pier, building, or parking area under the jurisdiction of the town. The regulation change is in place to reflect that we have a new facility that now will run a seasonal food and beverage service.
Thank you, John.
Sure. Oh, and just lastly, just to be clear, this recommended change was presented to the Waterways Committee, and the Waterways Committee voted unanimously to support the regulation change.
Thank you. And just to remind people, on April 18th, we did hold a meeting of our board and approved the liquor license ourselves, and so there's been one public hearing on this, on this liquor license already. But this is bring back the water management plan part of that. Any other discussion? Mary, I know you wanted to join that now.
Mary Anderson, Wilma's Way. And in my 30 years at the phone company, I was often willing to be the skunk at the lawn party, so I'm going to do that here tonight. I am so opposed to this. I, I'm just appalled that it has gotten this far. A year ago at town meeting, I went specifically with a lot of people who did not want a restaurant, and the current selectmen, most of you are still here, talked about a snack shack. Now, I know a snack shack from a restaurant when I see it, and I took a peek there Saturday. That is a full restaurant. The only difference is the seats are outside. There are 70 seats. Now, let's get back to why I think it's wrong to have that. Parking is a disaster. I always parked way over towards that new building, because that's the only place I could get when my husband's already on the boat. I just am appalled, and the reason I came is I would like to know how and why the selectmen changed from a snack shack to a restaurant, and now I find it has liquor too. I enjoy a beer. Larry knows that. I'm very happy to have a beer, but if I sit down and have a beer and there's a nice view, I'm going to linger. I'm going to have a second beer, and that's going to make the parking even worse. So, that's my question. How and why did you turn our snack shack where I hope to get like a turkey or roast beef? There is nothing in that snack shack you can take on your boat. It either requires silverware, or it's hot, and by the time we get out to Montemoy, you can forget it. So, that's my question.
Thank you, Mary. I recognize concern. I will point out that the, when town meeting approved the Sakwatautucket Harbor Management Plan and the snack shack, part of that approval was the allowing the leasing to sell beer and wine if they apply to the Board of Selectmen to do so. So, at least in that context, it was part of the original town meeting vote was to allow this to go forward as that. I'm surprised, we have a, I know Don beat up on the menu a lot. I thought we had a full menu that had hot and cold, but I'll leave that to more experts. Any other questions? Comments? Julie?
Good evening, board. Julie Kavanaugh, Five Old Carriage Drive, East Harwich. So, I would take the opposite view. I think this board and town meeting voted for a snack shack. I also think that a restaurant is indoors, and this is a snack shack. I was there on Friday, enjoyed a beer, nice view, and the seating is simple in the sense that you can sit there, you can have a beer, you can have a burger, you can have a sandwich, you can have a hot dog, or if you would rather not, you can actually just sit there. There are seats off to the side that this person has paid for dockside, and that's open to the public. You can go sit there, you can bring your own lunch, you can bring nothing, you can, you know, whatever, you can sit there and enjoy the view. The board licensed this facility with an alcohol license also. We signed a lease with the current resident there through an RFP process that he was the only bidder. So, ultimately, we have a facility that is actually separate from the Harbor Management Plan, because in itself, it never existed. So, to amend it is just following a policy, which we have plans all over town that we amend. We just discussed cemetery regulations recently as a board. So, amending the regulation to make everything neat and tidy is fine. I mean, technically, you probably don't even need to amend it, but I get, you know, the idea that we'll make it nice and neat. But this is a facility licensed by the Board of Selectmen and an RFP put out by the Board of Selectmen, and also a lease, a contract, signed by the Board of Selectmen. So, this is a facility in town that everybody can enjoy, whether you own a boat, whether you want to come and enjoy the harbor from out of town or in town. So, parking is certainly an issue all over town. It's not only at the harbor. It's downtown. It's in many places. We also have other facilities in town that have alcohol, and the idea that anybody has to worry about fraternizing, you know, children and such, you know, I find it interesting, because we have other facilities in town that have access to alcohol and the ability to drink one or two beers and sit there and take in the view or not. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else have a comment?
Good point, Julie, but Tom Sherry. Number one, there are many places in town I could go have a beer, and there'll be young kids around. That's, that's, it's a restaurant. It's a place to have. But this is town property. Okay? This is a public area. This is where I can walk with whoever I want to and not, should not be encumbered by walking through basically the middle of a restaurant. If my tax dollars are paying for this dock, I want to enjoy the dock. I don't necessarily want to go to this restaurant, but it's my biggest problem I have, though, is when you approved, when the board approved the alcohol for the, you know, the liquor license, this law is still, this was still in effect. Now, you, tonight, you're going to change it. Process should have been, you should have changed the rule first and then voted on it. How can you vote on something that's against the law and now change the law to make it legal? That's my question.
Good question we do. Chris, we did have a legal opinion on this.
Yeah, I think the legal opinion, Julie kind of, I thought, put it nicely where, you know, the board went down a path of creating a new operation down there, snack shack. It did go through town meeting for purposes of the capital plan to show that it was going to be a snack shack for the extension from a three-year to a 10-year. So, I think it has been vetted. The fact that this is a regulation that was inadvertently not updated is really, that's what tonight is to do, is to just remedy that and update the regulation to match up with the longstanding board policy regarding this, the installation of the snack shack and the leasing of the snack shack for its current operation.
John?
If I could just make one point about the Harbor Management Plan. It is a local regulation. It's a working document. I mean, if you look at the front page of our Harbor Management Plan, it has the dates that I and the previous Harbor Master have come before the Board of Selectmen to request a change for a variety of reasons. There are issues that come up at the harbor that a regulation may not have properly addressed. You're going to see me before you probably in a couple of weeks, because we have an issue with regard to boat size that we probably can tweak that regulation to make it more clear. And so, I'll be before you to recommend a change to the plan, and that's what I think is, that the management plan is intended for. I mean, if we could never change the regulation, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be advancing very far in the duty of the harbors or the functions of the harbor. I just want to take a quick.
Tom, you have more?
Sorry, Julie. Again, yeah, it's a living document. We can change it, but it's needed to be changed before you violated it. You needed to have this changed to say it's okay to have alcohol in Sakwatautucket. Fine. Get rid of that line and then vote on the liquor license. Things are just done backwards, and this is not the first thing in town that's done backwards.
I won't argue that, but I will say this is a remedy to that in this case. Julie?
Julie Kavanaugh, Five Old Carriage Drive. To clarify that point, the facility that we're talking about did not exist under the Harbor Management Plan, and that's exactly what I'm saying, is that, you know, you can say that something wasn't done effectively beforehand, but this was through a whole process, through a whole review process. And ultimately, this is another facility at the harbor that has a different function, a different use. It's not the first time the use of a facility municipal at that has been changed in town. It happens frequently. I would also point out that we have other places in town that are, again, town-owned properties. The golf course, community center, the cultural center, the community center, when we have the cranberry festival and others, other functions, that alcohol, beer and wine license is served, beer and wine is served through a license granted, whether it's for a day or two days, a weekend, whatever you want to say. You know, the same mix of people can be present. So, you have a new building, a new use, and you're incorporating that use that's already been purviewed by pretty much every agency in town. So, thank you.
Hi. Sunny Hall, Long Pond Drive. I'm also a business owner in Harwich, New England Vacation Rentals, one of the owners. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just feel compelled. Just love this town. Love being here, love being a part of this community. Support the selectmen, support the town, select the people. We're doing such a good job. What I do is bring tourists here. Tourists help our economy, love or hate them, they help our economy. It's 12 weeks. It's 12 weeks, and we have a boat in the harbor. I went there this weekend. I was nervous about parking, not going to lie. Got a spot. Wasn't a problem. Didn't walk through the snack shack, walked straight through to my little stairs, down to my little boat, out in my little beautiful harbor. Was hungry, have Brax, which I got married at and love, adore. I go there all the time. I play my keno, I have my rum punch, I enjoy my chicken sandwich, I enjoy my seafood there, I love it. Down on my boat, and I just wanted a quick snack. I didn't need something hot. We were going to Dennis. We could have given our money to Dennis. Instead, ran up, got a salad with cold lobster on it, got a shrimp cocktail, and a little key lime pie. It was all cold. We went to Dennis, enjoyed it on my boat, came back, and will continue to go to the snack shack for a snack. Will go to Brax for my fine dining and sit out there and enjoy my moment. Got married there 25 years ago. Love both. I think they both represent something great for Harwich. I was walking down without going to the snack shack, and I heard five people at the bar sitting there saying, "This is a great place. I want to come back here on vacation." They were there for the day. Let's bring people back here. Let's support all our businesses. There's no need for the negativity. We didn't get wine, we didn't get beer, we had plenty on our boat. We just needed a snack. It was fine.
That makes John feel good.
Just, just love Harwich, love everything. Let's support each other.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peggy Gabor. I guess for me, the process that everybody went through, I kind of feel like you're like the people who have an oceanfront property with pine trees, and in the wintertime, they rip all the pine trees down by the waterfront, and when the conservation person shows up, they say, "Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to do that," because now the trees are gone, and they will replant small little seedlings instead of the pine trees that were there blocking their view, kind of done afterwards. This project that went through so many hearings, what, Matt Hart, how, when did we begin with this Sakwatautucket Development Committee? What year?
That was two years ago. It was discontinued in April of last year.
I thought it started in 2014.
I believe it was.
Because that's what.
I think that's right.
Yeah, because John Rendon says that in many tapes of 2017 that I reviewed. What I have a problem with is you're the Waterways Group, you're the Harbor Master, and no one checked the harbor plan to see if alcohol was permitted in municipal buildings at Sakwatautucket Harbor, in the parking lot, on the boat launches, or anywhere else. Nobody verified that reality. Now, we're looking at that reality, and we're standing here before this town to tell them that we're going to change the rules now, because quite frankly, we messed up. We messed up, and you're not going to admit it, and you're just going to turn around and amend to make it better, because now we've already got a guy with a lease. Now, we've got a guy who's in there, he's got all his furniture. By the way, I have a document in my file from the town planner who says that only four, four top tables were permitted for the parking area. We now have an 80-seat restaurant on that liquor license? Is that what we're saying? I believe that was from the last meeting. Anybody want to take a stab at that?
No, that's what we're saying.
Okay. Who wrote, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is she done with the questions or?
I guess I'd like to know who wrote up the 80 seats.
I'll turn this to answer to Chris for your response.
John and I had a discussion when it went through to the planning board initially. I think John and I and the consultant thought that people would be seated on the benches that exist there and that people would consume their food in the general vicinity. So, I think for planning board purposes, we are, and I do have later on the agenda, that any plan that gets done, usually there's modifications to it, so we will complete an ASBIL and go back to the planning board to advise them of the changes. The planning board, they did say that they had seats that were shown from what we've submitted as illustration. The Board of Health did put in there a specific limit of 50 seats, because that's what the septic system was predicated upon. So, the restaurant seating, or the seating for the snack shack, I should say, the public seating for the snack shack, is at under 50 now. And that's consistent with what the Board of Health approved.
Mr. Chairman, could I answer her first question?
Are you, you want more, you want? I'll turn it to Matt, let him answer the question. Yes, please.
Your question, if I'm guilty, I am sorry, but I remember also at town meetings, at planning board, beer and wine was mentioned every time. Now, I asked a question, I need to go through the chairman. When did they do the document that allowed the liquor being served out at the golf course?
My question is that it's in the harbor plan in black and white. It's in, it's already written in there, so you should know, being head of the Waterways, as well as Mr. Rendon, I'm not, I'm not, all of you should be aware that it was in there. Somebody should have asked the question. Nobody did, and here we are now going to amend things.
You make a point. I don't want to debate this continually.
All right.
Let me, let me quickly answer. We did have the question. John took it to the town attorney, and he, and I've heard the definition here a couple of times. It was primarily aiming at on the docks, in the parking lot, as it is in, if you went to the beach. So, we decided to move ahead with the change, the Harbor Management Plan, just as continuity as it was mentioned over here. But first, John went through the chairman and got permission to speak to the town attorney, and he didn't think it was necessary. We decided we wanted to do it anyhow.
Okay, well, I disagree with the attorney. I think public access facilities kind of, kind of covers that.
Thank you. I'll continue this debate, though, because I. Thank you, I'll continue the debate though, because I...
Okay, well, the whole thing, the planning thing, the planning board, whatever the health department says, with septic, has nothing to do with the size of a parking lot. And it's limited to the parking lot size. To the amount of spaces that are available for people to park. You can have a 50-seat restaurant, but if you only have 10 spaces to park, where's everybody going to go?
Yeah. And this is, and that was one part that the planning board did go through with the parking and felt we were okay with the, I don't think they saw 80 seats, it was fewer than that.
Right, well, the document I have says four, four tops.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Julie, one last comment, then we'll move on.
Yeah, I promise I won't say anything more, but Julie Kavanaugh, Starwich. I just want to point out, because I do live in the permitting world, and you know, final as-builds are tweaked all the time, we are always finding changes that happen in a project, so the idea that you've got a different seating scenario, but different seating was shown on one plan, and you're going to see something different, none of that is crazy different. And anytime the planning board is involved, they're well-used to the fact that, you know, as-builds change, a final as-build will certainly be tweaked. So, I just want to impress upon everybody here that none of that is out of the ordinary. And again, I would point out that you've got multiple plans in place all over town that have to have the ability to be amended to suit whatever's going on in town at the time. If you have a document from, you know, 95, and it's 2019, you know, that may need to be looked at. Our own charter gets amended. So these are documents that cannot always be lifelong in existence, because you're always going to find a scenario where you're going to have to amend things. And again, I would point out that this is not a restaurant, it's not an 80-seat restaurant. We had all different types of seating along there, and some of it was in different formats, and you can still access the harbor and the areas if you don't want to be exposed to alcohol. There are limitations as to where you can bring that alcohol. So, again, just for clarification, it is a snack shack, it's not a restaurant.
Thank you. Mary?
I can be very brief, a couple of math issues. A 50-seat restaurant is, 50 seats is what the Board of Health asked? I counted 70 there, and I respectfully disagree with you, it is a restaurant. The only difference is the seating is outside. And if some of those seats aren't considered part of the snack shack, when somebody comes out and the snack shack seats are gone, they're going to go to those seats. You have an 80-seat restaurant on your hands, and I still disagree with it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? I'll take a motion to...
Will we close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, let me, I'll start, who do I start with? Ed, I haven't started with you, I, Sergi.
Historically, when we first began looking at redesigning the harbor, both, and it was looking at both the waterside and the landside, we were still in the process of acquiring the Downey property, a long time ago. And there was lots of talk about adding, adding in all sorts, all sorts of level of commercial development to the harbor, and I, along the way, argued that we already have an existing problem with parking there. We need any additional parking we get off of the Downey property to support the charter operations, none of which, except for the ferry, provided any parking, and argued against adding any additional commercial operations, even including the art shacks. Obviously, I lost that, that decision in the plan that was approved. And so at this point, given that after much review at several town meetings, much review by several committees, and I don't know if I was a selectman when the current plans that have been built were approved. I might have been serving the town at the county, but they came before the Board of Selectmen on numerous occasions, were submitted as articles, went to vote to approve bond issues, and at that point, it's, it's what the people of this town have decided they want to do. And as a selectman, since I've been re-elected a year ago, I've been attempting to help the harbor master acquire funds to finish it off. I've been as supportive as possible as we've gone through the process of leasing out the facility and getting it up and running, because to build something and then take a stance of trying to make it not work, just doesn't make any sense to me.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm going to offer the counterpoint to that. Biggest point that everybody's blowing past here is that this is a municipal facility that's owned by the townspeople. So a lot of what's been said really doesn't apply to this, because there are contract rules, there are other things that we have to abide by. Just a quick rundown here. We issued a contract with a bigger scope than was advertised in the RFP. Nobody, except for this guy, knew that he was going to get more seats out of this. The operation became bigger. There were 80 seats ultimately, when there was a walkthrough, and they expanded, expanded the land territory as well as the seating. And there's a liquor license that sports that same number. As of this past Friday, and I got emails on all of these with the supporting documentation, we had a planning board site plan with 12 parking spaces and four picnic tables, as was talked about before. As of Friday, we had a voted Board of Health seating capacity of 50 individuals, based on the septic system. As of Friday, there was no certificate of occupancy, whether temporary or permanent, and yet the place opened. As of last week, we had a decision from our lawyer that this part of the plan didn't apply to the snack shack, and while I disagree with his reading of this, it begs the question of why we're even here tonight. I mean, if he's telling you that this doesn't apply to the snack shack at all. So, this only underscores, I believe, and I've said this before, probably for the last two years, over and over again, that this is the poster child for why town meetings should be voting on what they're actually getting, like the fire department did. There were bids for a building. We're not sitting here saying, "Well, that was just an as-built, we need three more bays, and by the way, it's going to cost $2 million more." That wasn't done, it was a real project with real bids, and it was, it was laid out at town meeting. None of this was specifically, if you'll excuse me, I'm almost done, but this pertains to all of this. We're backing into a project once again, where everything was wrong, and we're fixing it on the fly. I'm embarrassed, I really am. And I can tell you right now, that now I wouldn't I vote for this tonight, but I would never vote for a trust me lease or contract warrant article to town meeting ever again, unless it was an emergency. Because this is the convoluted nonsense we get into.
I take your points, Don. On the other hand, the agenda item tonight is solely on the waterways management...
And fixing something that was broken that we should have known about.
Well, that's an explanation, but that's our sole objective, the numbers of seating, the building plan is actually not on the agenda tonight. Steve?
Wow. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen. I, most of the input that I've received from people has been of a positive nature relative to what's gone on down there, is what's been constructed, the kind of work that people put in to bring the money in. And I don't know whether you're saying you're embarrassed by the project, Don, I certainly am not embarrassed by the project.
Not the project, the way we got to it.
I would agree that the process seems to have had some crazy twists and turns, no doubt about that. And, and those kinds of twists and turns caused people a lot of concern about the process and how it went about. But, at this stage of the game, I mean, you look at it, and this is a beautiful facility. We have someone who is a, as I understand it, and you know, I've only been involved in this for a short period of time, has a tremendous reputation for running a restaurant in Newport for 35 years, and I think he also ran an Irish pub in Boston for quite some time with no violations in both those instances. And we know that in order to be a viable entity there, that it most likely was going to be a situation where someone would need a beer and wine license. And even though I understand the concerns that are expressed, we need to move forward with this. We need to find a way to make it work for the town, because it's a great asset for the town. I think that all the people on the waterways committee, there's no, you know, deception here, it's, it's, these are people who volunteer for the committees, they work hard on these committees, they care greatly about the town, and I think that, you know, we need to give them a certain amount of credit for all the work that they've done in this regard. And so, for me, you know, coming into this, obviously at the tail end of it, even though I've been living in the town for quite a while, I say, "Let's resolve this in the fashion that's been proposed, and try, as we go forward in the future here, to have a process for a lot of things, not just this." And Don, you've been one that's pointed this out many times, I've been at these selectmen's meetings and, you know, hold my head back there, and, and I hear what you're saying. And I do think, one of the things that I would like to try to do, and this is a little bit off-topic, Larry, but if you'll permit me, you know, I'd like to create a better process for a lot of the things that we do, because we saw some of that on town meeting floor. But I think it's time we really, you know, take a step back and look at what these folks have done, and all the work that's taken place, and the beautiful facility that we have. I mean, this is a gorgeous facility, we should be proud of it. If somebody just doesn't want it to be, you know, utilized at all, and it'll sit there empty, I'm not going down that road at all. So I, I understand completely the concerns on the process, but I'm very proud of it, and I think we need to move ahead and make the changes.
Thank you, Steve. Michael?
I just want to start by saying how much I love to disagree with Julie from this side of the table.
Okay, we'll give you that.
So, and I did have a conversation with John Rendon about this last week. I'm not going to vote for this for one simple reason. It says, "With the exception, the new language, with the exception of the snack shack lease provisions and alcohol license issued by the Board of Selectmen." We don't even know what the lease is. Chris admitted tonight that he's, in a memo that is nowhere on the agenda, that I have no idea what, what it even means, but he, he changed the lease, they've renegotiated the lease. So we have, we do have a liquor license that apparently one member of the board called in a favor to get by the weekend, that says 80 seats right on the top of it. We have a Board of Health that says 50 seats. We have a resident that said there's 70 seats. There is no site plan, and as I stated back when we first debated this, like we do to every single person in town that wants to open a restaurant or any business, we require a site plan, except if it's the town of Harwich. So, the restaurant is new, regardless of what the town administrator wants to tell us, it's new, it has to go back before planning, and we'll have a new site plan. So I wouldn't even know what we were, what we're actually voting on. There is no, there is a new lease, and none of us know what the new lease says, with the exception of a few people apparently. So how do we vote this? And then, I'll save the rest for when we actually bring this back, because there's some things that we do need to fix, and there was a lot of mistakes that have been made. But I do agree with Stephen, it's time to move forward. But can we outline exactly what we have, and how many seats, and are they picnic tables? Can we get a picture besides a drawn diagram that's different from the RFP?
Chris, you, we can bring back some clarification after we move tonight.
Yeah, the memo that I put under the town administrator report, you know, obviously anything that's on that is subject to further discussion.
Okay.
So on that, it says we will do an as-build for what is completed, an update of what was submitted on the site plan originally and approved originally from the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, are there any objections to why we're here, as far as the changing the harbor management plan?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Matt?
Well, yes. Because, to Stephen's point again, trying to do things uniformly? When was the last time we had a joint meeting with an advisory board about changes to the harbor management plan? When was the last time we asked you to come before us? We just changed, John and I had that conversation. We've changed the harbor management plan a whole bunch of times since I've been on the board. We've never asked you to be here.
You're right, we changed the harbor management plan for this, you know, the last meeting, it was before we came here.
Right.
And we need to, we need to vote to change it. My point is, what are we voting to change? Because I'm not, it refers to a lease, but I'm not sure what that lease happens to be right now.
I requested the waterways committee to be here, I have a public hearing, because they voted on it on their agenda, it was on their agenda, they voted on it a week ago. But when they make a water management, changes to the harbor management plan, in the past, I think you've had public hearings to do so. And I want to be sure that you had an opportunity to do that.
We don't have public hearings, we have to come to you, we have a public hearing here.
Okay, my fault.
Usually if it deals with money.
Okay.
Is that, is a public hearing required to make a change in the...
Apparently, apparently not. I thought, it was my mistake then.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the recommended change in section 17.7, 7.17 of the harbor management plan, as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Michael?
So may I ask the same question. How are we going to vote on something that refers to a lease when the lease is different? And that's the end of my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Ed, any more?
It's been suggested that there's been changes in the lease, have there been changes in the lease?
The area is the same, the area designated for licensing is the same.
Okay.
Okay. Not the seating. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? I think you're voting on, it says a lease. It wasn't specifically talking about the snack shack. It says if there was a...
No, it says snack shack lease.
It says the snack shack lease.
Yeah. No, it does specify that.
It's a a-lease.
Nope.
The.
Yeah, no, they...
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion, then, Michael?
Just because Matt doesn't know what it says. With the exception of the snack shack lease provisions.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's entirely inaccurate what Chris Clark just said. The plan is different, the table layout is different, Board of Health came in and said from the 80 seats that we all approved three or four meetings ago, that they're only allowing 50. It's completely different from anyone that wants to look at it. It's not the same lease.
Okay, Don?
This is all I'm going to say. Just so everybody understands the sequence of events here, this isn't that these things disagree with each other. The approval for the 50 seats and the approval for the site plan preceded anything. And they have, no one has actually taken the time to go and request that those things be changed. We did everything we could to get this place open, irrespective of the fact that none of that stuff was changed. It was all in effect when this was done.
Yeah, okay.
Larry, and just to be clear, voting this down tonight doesn't do anything. It doesn't kick the guy out, it just allows us to look at everything that has changed and make an educated change. He doesn't have to leave tomorrow. We're not, we're not breaking his lease, we're not, we're being asked to change the harbor management plan, which the attorney said we don't have to change.
Okay, Steve?
I think it's more of a point of clarification, right? I mean, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. Chris, can you address the 50-seat issue? You know, that the Board of Health says it's 50 seats, and there's evidently available 80 seats around and about that area? Is that as a result of the other public seating that was mentioned on the floor? Is that, you know...
I think the 70 is definitely the other public seating. So he, he did ultimately put in 50, 50 seats is what he had. He was consistent with the rule that the Board of Health had that was strictly tied to the size of the septic system. The issue that really comes up, and this is one where ABCC has a desire to have seats... have seats in the, in their plan and their submission. So when we did an area that was part of the liquor agreement, when we did an area that was part of the lease, the lease actually said that to be negotiated at a later date, the liquor license. So it was always contemplated to have a negotiation on the liquor. You know, to be perfectly honest, we could have been cute and said, well, we don't want any seats because we'll just have people use the benches and, and just try to circumvent. So the gentleman came forward and he did propose eighty seats to John and I because that's the, what he could fit in that area. When he then went to get regulatory approval, talked to the Board of Health, and they said, no, you're capped at fifty, he agreed to, to cap it at fifty. And as I alluded to earlier, we will do an ASBIL that shows all the final revisions that have been made. Any development has revisions made to it.
Point of information.
Chris, is that?
Point of information.
Yeah.
I happen to know the Chair of the Board of Health. He did not come back. That designation was made prior to us entering into the lease. There has been no action taken subsequent to our entering into this contract, none.
Correct, correct, Mr. Chairman. No changes by the Board of Health have been made. He went, we, we had him or he went to the Board of Health and said, what was I approved for? Here's my plan that shows eighty.
He went to the Health Director.
It was the Health Director. Mr. Chairman, am I going to be allowed to finish my thoughts?
Please.
So he went to the Health Director. The Health Director pulled out what the approval was, and the approval was fifty, and he came into compliance with the fifty.
I have one follow-up question regarding, Chris, if, if the limit is fifty seats and people count seventy seats, he will remove twenty seats then?
Yeah, no, what, what I believe she's referring to is he did, I can't remember what he called it.
Can I, can I address that?
Yeah, please.
So what was in the lease is not any different than what has been approved by the Board of Health. If you remember correctly, we did a diagram in the lease of the area, and we identified an area that was not exclusive to the Snack Shack. It was open to the public. And those seats, according to the Health Director, are not counted as part of the fifty that is approved for the septic system. And as I said last week, and I'll say it again, had Mr. Griffiths not put tables out there, we would have. That was the whole intent of having the boardwalk where people could sit and enjoy and view the harbor. And that area, just to be clear, was specifically annotated in the lease that we came forward with for your review and for your approval. So obviously, the number is, is, I guess strategically, maybe Mr. Griffiths should have said fifty instead of eighty or seventy, you know, should have excluded the non-exclusive area from his count. I think he was, I think he was trying to be very forthright and honest with what was going on because his customers are allowed to sit there, but so can any other person who comes and wants to enjoy the harbor. So I, we did, I think, clearly outline that area. I used different colors. I used, you know, I labeled it. I did what, I tried to make it as clear as possible what the distinction was.
Okay, thank you, John. I see no more, no hands. We're ready for a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Post.
Three, three, four and two, two opposed.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to agenda amending the liquor license then? Because the license says eighty seats. We gave authorization for eighty seats for a certain place that doesn't have eighty seats.
I think we have to. And Chris, we need then your clarification on some of these lease questions, whether it comes back now or later. Michael?
Well, I would refer to the email that I sent four weeks ago now that you said you would try and get it. Chris said he would try and get an answer at last meeting to that email. So I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I can ask and ask and ask, but Chris never seems to find time to do it, so maybe you could, you could schedule that with him?
Yep. We'll work on that. We'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get it done. Okay. Thank you for this discussion. I know, I know Barry's not happy for one, but we'll.
Hey, I have beer and snacks as well as there. I, I liked Mr. Ford's comments about process.
Yeah. We, we all agree with that. We have to fix the process. That, that's our one, that's, that's our number one objective going forward. And we haven't agreed on everything tonight, but that's one we have. New business then? Sacquetucket Marina, vendor shack guidelines. Carolyn, that's, you're up.
They need to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I need to have them adjourned. Can I take the group?
Thanks for coming. I, I obviously-
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the night.
Thank you very much. I obviously made a mistake, but.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Got you. As I say, it was in good intentions. We're not going to throw anything at you, Carolyn.
I'm kind of nervous, I'll be honest with you. Carolyn Carey and I am here before you, hoping that I have the process correctly documented to move forward. The reason I have laid out what we are looking to do for the rental information for the seaside marketplace at Sacquetucket Marina, I've enclosed in your packet a sample of the application. There is a few things I'd like to go through, if that's okay. What the public didn't get, that was in your drop boxes, I believe, was all the backup documentation of how I arrived at this. And just for people, we went through Barnstable, Orleans, we went off Cape. We tried to find everyone who was doing a similar project and took some of their ideas. We met with people. So that's where the information came from. And so I'll move forward. We're looking to have this, the seaside marketplace open with the four seaside shacks starting the week of July third. The hours we're looking at are from nine AM to six, knowing that we can extend those hours in, if they come to us in writing, and we won't have it any time past dark. We're looking at a Wednesday to a Tuesday.
Carolyn, I, I must have been dreaming, but if they come to you in writing and say, make a formal-
They have to request in writing after six PM. And the reason why. You know, we're not going to close it down if it's, if it's-
No, I just, I just-
Okay. But yes, the set hours will be nine to six, so they are required to be there from nine to six. And then if they'd like to extend it a little later, some wanted to go till seven in other places, we're happy to accommodate that as long as we have it in writing so we know. And we can post and advertise through the chamber and on the town websites and things. We are asking that it be a juried process, so, meaning that we're going to ask people to submit their bodies of work, what they'd like to do, so that we can assess a point system, which we have given you in the packet. The maximum amount of points someone can get is a nine and the minimum is a two. So we will, that way it makes it fair for everyone. If we've learned anything from running the cultural center, it's that in the beginning we just opened the doors and I was really hoping anyone would come in. Now we have a different caliber of people looking to come in. We're looking at what they're going to give back to the economic development of the town. We want to be good partners. We want to grow this, this endeavor. So that's why we're having a juried system. We are charging a twenty-five-dollar fee for that. If you are selected, that fee will go towards your rental. If you're not, it's going to just go into the town. We appreciate you and we're hoping that you'll come back again. We're going to give you some feedback on that. So I, I don't know how much you want me to go through. It's pretty self-explanatory, a hundred words or less. There'll be three people on the juried system. This is pretty typical of how people are doing it in the other areas, and they are pretty successful. We did put in place that we wanted to do it for a short amount of time specifically so we could evaluate how we were doing, what we need to change, so we could come back to you if in the, we call it after our inaugural season. Doesn't that sound great? So we will run through the September third date and then be back in front of you with what we think is running well, what we need to change. So that's my small summary.
Thank you, Carolyn. In essence, is, is a, is a weekly turnover then?
It is.
Does that concern you, the part that you, the management from your side of?
That's why I'm coming back to you in a short amount of time. If I'm asking for a bet at the harbor, maybe you could put that in next year's budget. I don't know.
It's, you're taking, yeah.
Maybe a boat. Excellent idea. So we will, we're looking at-
I encourage you.
I love that idea. We're looking at staggering which one of us will be there, so while we're still keeping the cultural center and the community center up and operational, those are important as well, but.
Okay. Michael?
Great job. Typical of Carolyn and company, very detailed. Thank you very much. No questions.
Thank you, Michael. Don?
Say what he said.
Ed?
Oh, I've been very supportive of this project for a long time, was happy to be there when we dedicated the shacks. I think it, it, in going forward, we need to, when we look further at the harbor management plan, we need to incorporate the operation of the shacks into it.
Steve? That's, that's probably a good idea. I was there as well for the dedication. It was, it was tremendous and, you know, just very exciting. We appreciate all the work you've put into this.
Michael?
I move that we approve the Sacquetucket Marina vendor shack's guidelines and application procedure.
A second? I need a second.
Second.
Leave me hanging.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous?
Can I just publicly say I wanted to thank Erica Strasbeck, who couldn't be here and put Yeoman's work into this, so. Thank you.
Moving to new, new business, Harwich Inn and Tavern. I request for Sunday entertainment license, inside only, from one to twelve AM. Michael?
I move that we approve the Harwich Inn and Tavern at seventy-seven Route Twenty-eight West. Request for Sunday entertainment license, inside only, from one PM till twelve AM.
A second?
If there's a restriction for the, the door?
What Don said.
Yeah, second.
Windows and doors?
Windows and doors. Because that was the original restriction.
Remain closed.
Remain closed, and that, I would second.
As was done recently. We have Yeoman here, so I can point it to him, but. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second?
Who seconded?
Don did. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passing unanimous?
That was the easiest one you've been to.
I was going to ask you to speak, but I wasn't sure it was necessary. Moving on, contracts. I'm not sure why you, this is on there.
It's just standard, no contracts for consideration tonight.
Move on to departmental reports then. Chris?
So under the town administrator report, my apologies for not getting more of these materials in here. As was alluded to earlier, I did prepare a memo of various construction projects. We are going to look at how we do construction projects in general to see if there's ways that we can make improvements to that project, to that process. So this is a kind of a first stab. Also, a heads up that we will be doing the ASBIL plans. Not having Mr. Cafarelli available for an extended period certainly didn't help, and then some of his institutional knowledge leaving. And then having a, not having an assistant during a period too has made it somewhat challenging in the last few months. In terms of, I know officially we were down at the, the South Harwich Meeting House, and I did introduce belatedly the new assistant, Joe Powers. So I thought with the, with up at our main location here that I would, once again, just introduce Joe Powers, who's been a week on the job or coming up on a week-
A week and a day.
A week and a day. As the Assistant Town Administrator. And so just wanted to introduce him to the community.
Welcome, Joe. I'll interrupt.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. One of his projects that he'll be working on is to put together some updates to the contracts and how we do procurement. So I've, I've been engaged in, and I know he and Griffin, the town engineer, are going to get their certification as procurement officers as well, so that there'll be more in-house capabilities in terms of that. So we are looking at that process as they go through recertification. I realize there are some things that we could be doing even better. It was nice to hear that the auditor didn't have any findings in those areas, but certainly we can always improve from being good to better, is the way I look at things. Just a couple of things for the board. I just, we normally do a summer schedule. I know we have a meeting tomorrow morning, but perhaps people could let Patty know and Sandy know if there's any vacation plans. Normally in the summer, we pick, or the board picks two meetings a month. And then during the summer also, if the board has a date in mind for the non-resident taxpayer meeting, and then what items you'd like to have staff kind of cover. I think historically, we've done DPW in the beaches as well as overall financial of the town. But if there are other issues that you would like to have on that, certainly we can have staff attend to those. But if you could send your vacation plans, so we can then see about making sure we have enough for a quorum, that would be great to Patty or Sandy, just to help you, Mr. Chairman, interim chairman, I don't know how to exactly address. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Pardon?
Question before we get to this.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
First of all, Cape Cod is a vacation paradise, so that if I take the time off, I'll be here. Second of all, we kind of blew past my comment. As of five minutes to four on Friday, five minutes before closing, the Snack Shack had no certificate of occupancy of any kind. Has that been remedied?
That's news to me. I, I've been assured by the, by the building, building commissioner that he issued a temporary occupancy, not a permanent, a temporary occupancy.
I talked with Ray on Friday.
That, that Ray, that Ray-
I'm hoping it's the same answer.
So let me just clarify that. So what we've issued is a temporary C of O for the harbor master's office and for the garage. We have done a final inspection and done a corinth shell inspection of the Snack Shack. We have not been back in to do the final inspection and issue a temporary C of O for that. That's where we stand with it.
That's the only reason I made the comment is because to occupy and operate, he would need that.
Yeah, but it's, it's, at this point, it's more a formality than, than anything else. And I can get down and do that as soon as John calls me down to do it.
Michael?
Just would say it's a formality that we wouldn't let any other business, private owned business get in there with.
True.
Yeah, that's, that's troubling. Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Okay.
I'm now to the segments reports. Don, going around the table.
Happier stuff. We, I gave the proclamation for Memorial Day. Larry was there, Ed was there, and it was a really nice day, kind of Norman Rockwell picturesque day, full sunlight, and makes you proud to live in this town.
My experience, I just interrupt because I was stubborn, so I insisted that I was going to be at the Island Cemetery. And so I parked over here and started walking and got into the Island Cemetery, realized I was in the wrong spot, turned around, and I ran into our, our speaker going to the same spot. So thank me that we had a speaker there. Michael?
I'm off.
Okay, Steve?
I, I just want to say I look forward to working with all of you.
Good, we survive. We occasionally say bad things about each other, but it works out.
Well, no worries. I spend a lot of time in this kind of a setting, so.
Motion to-